You are watching Access La Porte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is the December fifth, twenty twenty three meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of Michigan City Common Council to order December fifth, twenty twenty three. Could you please sign us all electronic devices and stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag and a silent prayer? All right, sir.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and just.
Ms. Knight on the roll call, please.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Mack.
Present.
Ms. Deitch.
Present.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Present.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Mr. Cora.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have nine present and no one opposed.
Okay, we have a corner. First up, approval of the minutes. We have our November eighth, twenty twenty three minutes as well as our November twenty first minutes.
Motion to approve both dates.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Don Prespolinski and seconded by Dr. Cora. Ms. Knight up on the vote, please.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Mr. Cora. Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Reports of standing committees. Councilman Dabney. Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Michigan City Finance Committee met on today, December fifth, twenty twenty three, at five thirty five P. M. And starting off with the Michigan City Riverboat Claims Docket for November twenty first, twenty twenty three, Riverboat Fund number two, two, three, five, one hundred thirty thousand, five hundred ten dollars. E F T for two million dollars. Riverboat E F T, two, two, three, five, zero dollars. Boy Development E F T, two, five, four, zero dollars. Totally. One hun- I'm sorry, totaling two million one. Let me retract that. Also, Fund number two, five, zero, four, Boy Development, zero dollars, E F T, one hundred thousand dollars. Total claims, two million, one hundred thirty thousand, five hundred ten dollars. December fifth, twenty twenty three, Funds number two, two, three, five, Riverboat Claims, fourteen thousand, five hundred fifty dollars. There was a recommendation made by Mr. Fitzpatrick and seconded by Ms. Tillman to approve claims from November twenty first, twenty twenty three, and December fifth, twenty twenty three, in the amount of two million, one hundred forty four thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. There was a motion to approve and passed with two to zero. Also, Statement of Cash Position for November twenty first, twenty twenty three, Ending Balance, four million, two hundred sixty dollars, thirty seven dollars, thirty one cents. And Statement of Cash Position Fiscal Year to Date, December fifth, twenty twenty three, Ending Balance, four million, two hundred sixty thousand, thirty seven dollars, thirty one cents.
Thank you, Councilman. Claims docket for November twenty first, twenty twenty three, Fund twenty, two, thirty five, Riverboat Claims, in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, thirty thousand, five hundred and ten dollars, E F T, in an amount of two million dollars. Fund twenty, five, zero, four, Boy Development, zero dollars, E F T, of one hundred thousand dollars, for a total claims amount of twenty one, two million, one hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. And then for December fifth, we have Fund twenty, two, thirty five, Riverboat Claims, in an amount of fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, E F T, zero. Fund twenty, four, twenty, five, zero, four, Boy Development, zero dollars, E F T, zero, for a total claims amount of fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. There are most to approve both claims.
So move.
We have most to approve, the claims that's presented by Councilman Dabney and seconded by Councilman Cora. Ms. Knight up on the vote, please.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Mr. Cora.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Aye, and I'm glad to see that we are paying for our additional fire equipment that we subsequently are catching up from all the previous administrations. Thank you. And I got a, I have a point of order for the, ask the chair if we can have due respect to address Dr. Cora as such in the minutes and have everything reflect as such. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Did he say yay?
I'm excited to vote complete.
No, no.
What was your vote?
In favor, yay.
Ms. Tillman.
Support.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
And Mr. Mack.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Reports from boards and commissions. Reports of special or select committees. Report from mayor or other city officers and departments.
Good evening, Council President, Council Members. Double goal, Michigan City Fire Chief. I'm going to go over our November calls. For the month of November, twenty twenty three, we had three hundred and sixty one calls. Eight were fire calls, structured fire calls. Two hundred and ninety two were rescue and emergency medical service incident calls. Ten hazardous condition old fire calls, six service calls, thirty six good intent calls, five false alarm, false calls, and four special incident type. We had three Narcan calls that we use Narcan on. Our total to year incident calls are four thousand, three hundred and sixty four. Last year, year to date was three thousand, nine hundred and sixteen, so we're up three hundred and forty three calls more than the previous years, which gives us an eleven percent increase from last year. One other quick thing I'd like to go over. Or I'm sorry, to congratulate probationary firefighters Alex Bell, Tristan Fraser, Jake Ott, Ryan Stanley, Jonathan Zerbs, and Anthony Zarekka on successfully completing the District One Fire Academy on December first, twenty twenty three. So they all graduated, they're back on shift, and they're doing really well. And actually, I'd also congratulate, they have a valedictorian and a class, the class votes on a class officer. So the valedictorian went to probationary firefighter Jonathan Zerbs, so I'd like to congratulate him. And the academy class officer was voted on and probationary firefighter Jacob Ott received that. And that was actually, I believe, three years in a row, Michigan City has won those two awards.
Twice in one year.
Yeah, I'm sorry, three academy classes in a row, yes. So I also like to report that the new Pierce twenty twenty three enforcer pumper from Pierce Manufacturing was put in service about a month ago at Engine Two or Station Two. And the one hundred foot Pierce aerial platform was put in service about a week and a half ago. So the guys at Station Four are real happy. Everything's going really well other than that. Well, that's my report.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for our Chief Bill?
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments. Want to congratulate the probationary firefighters that did very well at the academy and especially the ones that were the valedictorians.
Valedictorian class officer.
Yeah, that's, that's great. That's a reflection of the young firefighters that want to become firefighters and, you know, their attitudes and, you know, how smart these people actually are getting into the profession. And just for the public, if you would, Chief, would you tell everybody here tonight in the council chambers and of course, the people that are viewing in on TV, how much these fire trucks, the cost of these fire trucks are, I mean, they're not just, you know, pennies on the dollar. They're millions of dollars. And could you tell the public how much they cost?
The Pierce twenty twenty three pumper, enforcer pumper was, I believe, eight hundred and sixty five thousand roughly. And the twenty twenty three aero, one hundred foot aero platform was just under two million dollars.
Okay. Oh, just one more question. The eleven is, what was the reason for the eleven percent increase in calls this year? Do you have any data on that?
I do not. I would, from the looks of it, it's probably more medical calls. But I'd have to go and look at the previous month to month and see where the increase was. I honestly, I don't.
Okay.
Have that information.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, if you could do that, just send me, any other council members, the cause of the increase, I'd appreciate that.
A gentleman out here asked about the life expectancy of the fire trucks. N. F. P. A. recommends that you use a fire truck up to fifteen years and then it goes into reserve status.
Yeah, and if I, I just want to comment on, on the fire trucks and the equipment that our firefighters have, the equipment that our police departments have. And when I travel to other cities in the, in the area, I'm talking big cities, okay? And I always, that always catches my eye. I want to see what their equipment looks like compared to what ours looks like. And I can guarantee you that Michigan City has the top of the line and best performing. I don't know if it's the best performing because I don't know what their maintenance records are, but I can guarantee you that we have outstanding equipment for our police and our firefighters.
I would agree one hundred percent on that.
Yeah.
Councilman?
Councilman President.
I would like to thank Chief Legault and the firefighters for working with us and educating the council on the apparatus and the, and the need therefore, and also, you know, Chief, we had many, many discussions about that piece of equipment and I'm glad to see that, you know, through our conversations that we found common ground to go ahead. And I think we owe Doug, or Chief Legault, some kudos because he was bucking pressure from the administration. And it takes a big person to do that. And I want to thank you, Chief Legault, you know, for, for stepping forward and, and we, we knew we needed equipment. Somebody didn't want to get that equipment. And I want to thank you publicly.
I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Fighters, you know.
I know myself and the firefighters want to also express our thank you to the council for making it happen.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Council. Steve Forker, Chief of Police, Michigan City Police Department. Again, I just, like Chief Legault, wanted to give the November stats for the police department. We responded to two thousand, nine hundred and one calls for service. For that, we took three hundred and eighty three incident reports. There was one hundred and sixty eight arrests. Twelve of those were juvenile, one hundred and fifty six for adults. Twelve firearms were seized. Nine of those were handguns, two rifles and one pellet. A couple of block significant, well, some significant events that involved some of our flock. We were able to recover twelve hundred dollars and recover and return twelve hundred dollars worth of merchandise in a timely manner to the store at the Outlet Mall. We recovered an additional stolen vehicle. It helped in the apprehension of an unauthorized control of a motor vehicle. There was a criminal recklessness incident which involved shooting into a dwelling. There was three arrests in reference to that event. A firearm recovered and several drugs were seized. And it was used in several, I would say, warrant service events. So again, just, just a few of the, I would say, more significant events for this month for flocks. And again, just trying to, we've been working on right away to report that stuff and gather that data. And I think we're starting to get some stuff down so we can again track that data and obviously report some of that stuff to you guys, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief Forker? Thank you. Thank you. Any other reports of city officers or departments? Petitions. I'm sorry.
There are no petitions this evening.
Communications.
And Mr. President, if I may, on the communications, on this letter that I would like to have it read in its entirety by the clerk.
Okay. Mayor Dwayne Perry, regarding transition of administration. In light of the fact that I've elected as the next mayor of Michigan City, I would like to schedule a meeting with you or Chief of Staff to discuss transition of administration.
Mrs. Knight, can you speak up a little or move the mic closer? Thank you.
Do you want me to start over?
I don't think so.
Okay. Please provide me with the dates that you will be available between December eleventh and, and the December twenty second. I would ask that you provide me with available dates no later than Wednesday, December sixth. Further in preparation of this meeting, I would ask that you have your staff compile with following critical documents for my review and for discussion during our meeting. Number one, State Department of Accounts audit reports of least two years. Number two, all major city contracts over twenty five thousand, includes contracts with vendors and interlocal agreements with other units of government. Number three, list of major litigations matters involving the city. Number four, unresolved urgent or pressing constituent matters directed to the mayor's office. Your cooperation with the request is appreciated by not only me, but also by the residents of the city of Michigan City who have entrusted us as stewards of good government. Lastly, I would like, would ask that we discuss during our meeting the final plans for you to turn in any city-owned property and also provide access to the data system that might be password protected. Sincerely, Angie Nelson Deitch, Mayor-elect of City of Michigan City.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Can you please read our first resolution?
Resolution by title only. A resolution of the Michigan City Common Council redesignating this Michigan City Urban Enterprise Zone for a period of five years from the current sunset date of December thirty first, twenty twenty three. And this is introduced by Mr. Paul Prespolinski, Mr. Mack, and Mr. Cora. Doctor Cora.
We know this resolution was tabled until November twenty first council meeting based off information received, so. Is there any comments from the sponsors?
I, I believe that this is what you would call a concurring, not an obligation, but something that needs to be done so we don't lose that status. It's, it's, we're, we're gaining so we don't lose. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the sponsor? Comments from the public?
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street, Michigan City. I am a director or commissioner on this board, urban enterprise zone. This is something that the people have come to count on. Our funds are going up every day through our leader, through our new leadership, Mr. Tommy Amico. We have changed a lot of our structure and we have it on the right path. This will benefit the people of the urban enterprise zone more than anyone can ever imagine. It'll be a tragedy to let this go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick. Any other comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilwoman Deitch.
Yes, I agree. I think the urban enterprise zone is important. And I would like to think, how did, did she say Chappelle or Chappelle? How did she say her last name? Chapel, chapel. For all the information she submitted, I do have one amendment that I did send out. The only amendment that I did was to, and, and I'll just read them so that everybody, I can read it into the record in the whereas statements and the council has it, and I apologize that it's delayed. But just for sake of, I did have a conversation with the Controller's Office. And I also made sure that the attorneys drafted this for us. But just like with any board or commission, I just want to make sure that we put the same financial controls on, on this, this board as we do all of our commissions and establishing a fund. So let me read the, the whereas statements. The first one, the addition is three, establish internal financial control so as to promote accountability and transparency as required by I C five dash eleven dash one dash twenty seven. And then in the second, therefore, it says now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of Michigan City that the sunset date of the zone be extended an additional five years from the current sunset date of December thirty first, twenty twenty three. That stays the same, but add it subject to annual review by the Common Council with the annual report provided by the U E A, just like other commissions. The next one before, be it further resolved that the new sunset date for the zone will be December thirty first, twenty twenty eight, unless terminated sooner by the resolution of the Common Council. Be it further resolved that the participation fee for the U E A shall be thirty five percent. And then the added, the added language is be it further resolved that is a condition on the Common Council's extension of the sunset date of the zone. A separate fund shall be established for our participation fees collected by U E A. And said fund shall be administered by the city controller of the city of Michigan City and U E A's designated financial officer. So they will have their own fund established, just like all of our, our other commissions and boards, and they will follow the same financial controls. So I move for this amendment.
Second.
We have a motion to amend by Councilwoman Deitch and seconded by Councilman Paul Prespolinski. Ms. Knight up on the vote, please.
Mr. Don Pres- Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Mr. Cora.
Aye.
Doctor Cora. Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
And Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Can you please read our next resolution by title only?
Well, that was on.
Oh, sorry. That's right.
And, and I did have another comment. I, I did have a question. And I know, I know we increased the fee collection. Have you had any feedback from the businesses at all on the fee? Because we went from twenty percent to thirty five, which actually is comparable to what other cities are doing.
So there actually was no resolution established that we could find back in the records last year when we reviewed it that established that twenty percent. So we went ahead and got in line with the rest of the county and went with the thirty five percent and put it in writing. And I've had one business ask me, like, where the thirty five percent came from, and I explained it to them and they were fine with it.
Good, good. Because that's, that's normal for everybody else. So I just want the public to know. Just in case you hear something from a business, that's what the other areas of the county are doing as well. Thank you.
Okay, so we have comments from the council, comments from the council. Any other comments from the council?
Move for adoption.
Support.
Most to approve by Councilman Paul Prespolinski and seconded by Councilwoman Tillman. Ms. Knight up on the vote, please.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Doctor Cora.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
And Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Can you please read our next resolution by title only?
The resolution by title only, approving the third amendment to the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty four Union Contract between the city and the Michigan City Fraternal Order of Police Dunes Lodge, number seventy five. And this was introduced by Mr. Don Prespolinski and Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Any comments from the sponsors?
I, I would like to have the chief just come up and put some light on this resolutions and the fine details behind it.
Again, Steve Forker, Chief of Police, Michigan City Police Department. The, behind this resolution, we had, ultimately, we did a testing applicant testing date back on August nineteenth, which resulted in essentially seven applicants receiving a conditional offer of employment. Those applicants received a conditional offer of employment back in, I believe it was October seventh, it was that first week of October. Unfortunately, they weren't able to get down to perf to do the physical and psychological exams until this week and next week of December. And we won't receive those results back before the first of the year, in which I would say, I would ask in good faith that when these applicants applied in August, that was a big push for us, was one of those things, was the big, the sign-on bonus, which helped drew, you know, which helped draw several applicants. So we were just asking to extend that sign-on bonus to the seven applicants that received a conditional offer of employment pending the results of their physical and psychological examination. So essentially, if they pass that, we're going to hire them, so.
Councilman President.
I want to say that, you know, I, I don't have a problem with, with doing that. And that's why I, you know, put my name on it. And the thing is, is that, you know, we, we did offer this and because of those conditions, I don't think that we should hamper our recruitment abilities in that they would, people know that when the city says something and that they're a good faith partner. I guess that's what I'm looking at saying, is that I think that those people want to come here, that we should take them in and give them that bonus. Because whatever reason that they, they couldn't get their testing done, they did apply in the last, they did apply in the last period. That's the whole thing. No, it's kind of like a catch twenty five. Thank you. So I, I would hope that everybody can support this and are we, are we going to be a full complement at what we're, what we've been looking at as our full employment?
So with the, I would say, fall seven pass.
Yes.
That would put us at eighty three.
Yeah, okay.
Be one short of our full complement of eighty five, so almost accomplished.
Almost there.
So.
Very good.
Yeah. Again, I'll just say thank you to the council, you know, for obviously approving that bonus and, you know, what we did with the public safety lit tax. I would say that helped, obviously, in our recruitment over the last year, so.
Thank you.
Any comments from the?
Oh, you got it. Yeah, I just, thank you, Chief, for the explanation. I think it's very clear what we're, what we're doing here. And that's why I also signed on. I mean, we had a, we had a contract. We have the, all these things put in place to draw recruits to the police department. We got them. Now we're going to follow through on our part of the contract. And I, I, I would hope, and I'm pretty confident that all my colleagues here on the council are going to support this resolution. And one more comment, I'm glad to hear that we're up to, we'll be up to eighty three. And we'll hit eighty four. And I got compliments out to this, this council for working with the police department and with the lit tax and putting a package together where we reached our goals. And we, we basically, you know, we're back to where we need to be. Yeah, with all the criticism that the council took over a period of time, we weren't doing this, we weren't doing that. We weren't listening to these people, we weren't listening to those folks. We were listening to everybody. We listened to everybody. We knew what we had to do, but it just took time getting to where we had to get. Just can't do some things overnight. And, and folks know that. And they have to realize, you know, the, the restraints that we have to work under and what it takes to get to the final goal. And I think we accomplished that. So, and thanks to you, Chief Forker, for being one of the guiding forces.
Been a team, so, you know, across the board, so teamwork makes the dream work.
There you go. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Any comments from the public?
Chief Walker. I just have one question for you. Thank you. This is all great news. It's great to know that your roster will now be. Where it's where it's required to be. I just have one question in regards to. The bonus or the sign on bonus out of the numbers for your roster, were there any? Bonuses that was administered that did not complete? For whatever reason.
Yeah, there was two that I know of. Yes, there were people that were signed on and then. Essentially left for personal reasons, I would say.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Comments from the public?
Scott Mellon, two hundred Kenwood Place. If we offered a bonus for these men and women to hire on, we certainly should. Honor that. It would be a terrible way to start a relationship with new hires to dangle something out. Given the two people that received a bonus who no longer work for the department, though, perhaps there should be a probationary period so that we don't. Get burned that way again. Nothing against, you know. Maybe a thirty or sixty day cold. I don't know. But we certainly should honor what we've offered them, but they need to maintain their employment with us.
And I was a part of that negotiating committee. I think that that wouldn't have been paid out to the end of the year from now.
How do we do that?
I believe that it's a one time payment and I I personally thought that it was. After their. Probationary period. That they they get it paid out. So it it's a one time thing that we did this year to get attract people, you know. So this is the only year that we're going to deal with it and I can't begrudge the guys who. Want to come here, you know, and there's some other things that we did inside the contract that I think that. We can talk about it now and I I do want to say this that we, this year legislators. Provided a condition that. You could offer a twenty five year bonus plan to officers and we were one of the first. Communities to do that. So. The way I look at it is they're not capped at twenty years. That's it. It's twenty five years and it's it does help. On uh, I think it helped on recruiting people to come here because I don't have a complete. Breakdown, but I think there were some senior officers that came here from other departments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
I I I have a question for the Controller's Office for the two that didn't stay. Do we get our money back? See.
Can I?
So so basically you got the money and they ran. And they were able to leave.
Money and run.
I mean, so I guess next time we decide to do it because I mean, I think I still would have voted for it, so it wouldn't even matter. I still would have voted for the bonus. I just think next time we we just think through how we how we do it. That's all.
Councilman Tillman.
If I can piggyback off of that. I was for the bonuses as well, but keep in mind, I actually brought forth an ordinance in regards to a sign on bonus with conditions. In regards to what the gentleman spoke of, but the consensus was I didn't want it to get voted down. So it's been tabled. So that is something that I am still wanting to look into further.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Most to approve by Councilman Don Presblewinski and seconded by Councilman Deitch. Ms. Knight on the vote, please.
Doctor Cora.
Aye.
Mister Paul Presblewinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mister Dabney.
Aye.
Mister Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mister Matt.
Aye.
Miss Deitch.
Aye.
Mister Don Presblewinski.
Aye.
And Mister Simmons.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Read our next ordinance by title only.
A resolution by title only amending section two of resolution four eight five three to allow the funding for the E D C M C. To hire additional staff to administer the community grant fund for small businesses and this is introduced by Mister Dabney.
Any comments from the sponsor?
Yeah, this this was money that came out of the ARPA funds that we passed and we discussed this on the ARPA committee. Where we had passed a million dollars for the community grant. Fund for small businesses and what we did was just basically move a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This is not a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of the new money. It was just moved out of the million that was approved. In order to go for staffing the the E D C M C. To hire staff to administer the community grant fund in small business and do some other things in the office as well. So it wasn't new money. Like I said, it was just transferred out of the million that we had already approved through the ARPA committee.
Thank you, Councilman. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council?
Yeah, Mister President.
Councilman Presblewinski.
Uh, I have a couple of questions. How many people are going to be hired with this hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
And for how long?
E D C F C Director, we're hiring one person for two years. It's a reimbursement process and we I can explain in a nutshell. We'll be announcing next month up to twenty five thousand for a small business. Below twenty five employees in Michigan City. The idea is to use the funds to help enhance business who are struggling, small businesses in the community. But it is a reimbursement. So it means we have to go through a process where we'll have a couple seminars to. Let the public know about the funding and then they apply for the funding online. This person has to go through the paperwork, make sure that their local companies, they meet the requirements. And then there'll be a letter from the city telling them they qualify up to twenty five thousand. After that, it would be six months later. After they finish, they have to give us the receipts and then the city wants to comply with the ARPA program. So it's a process. So that's why, but one person has to do all that.
Okay, you talk about a reimbursement. Can you do me a favor Clarence? Could you come down front and then? Yeah, so maybe it's a little clearer for me to hear it. But what how does that reimbursement program? Work that you're speaking about?
Well, because it's federal money, we have to provide certain paperwork to the city. So the city complies with the ARPA requests. So once you give away the money, there's no paperwork coming back to you. So the way to do it is tell you you qualify up to twenty five, could be five thousand dollars. And so let's say you need to buy software or buy. Something. We get a receipt, we turn it over to the city, the city pays the our the our business. So and whatever else the Controller's Office asks for.
Okay, and this person that you're hiring, you're going to hire him for one year, right? Two years. All right, are they getting the full benefit package too?
We will pay them above and beyond what you guys are offering. So we're offering the. Health insurance, medical, eye vision, everything we offer our employees.
Okay. So so you're hiring them to you're hiring to.
One person for two years.
No, you're hiring one person for two years and they're going to be paid. A hundred and not a hundred and twenty, what are you going to pay them?
Roughly between fifty and fifty five.
Pardon?
Between fifty and fifty five.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Plus benefits.
Okay.
Was not included in there.
All right, thank you.
I have a que- I have some questions to.
Yeah, Councilman Deitch.
And well, not questions, but comments. This person is going to also. Work on the vibrant Michigan City and workforce initiatives as well, not just. The small business.
Yes, keep in mind, we also have the last nine months. We had Brookings here and List here helping us to work in the west side, east side and midtown. And so one of the things we we were asked was to help bring somebody on board to help us with those programming. For the housing, financing, entrepreneurship, capacity building for nonprofits. So there's a lot of work going on around downtown and so. Part of the ask is to help us get that person on board so we can seek grant funding for those areas in the city. Thank you.
Councilman Presblewinski.
Well, you know, that sounds great and you you know Clarence, you mentioned Midtown, but. One of the issues that I have and I think that. You can deal with it next year is that I think that you should come and either have a workshop with the council. And in not only the council, but the community and I don't think that. Maybe it should be like quarterly, maybe not. But so- something should be done so everybody, the community knows what's going on and the council members know and. Different department heads know. Especially when we're trying to initiate this. Vibrant Michigan City. Program. So I'm just saying I. I'm not proposing to put any legislation forward. I think as a act of goodwill. That so everybody's working together and know knows what programs and what's going on internally. That you 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 have some open discussions and meetings with the community and the city council. But I think it'd be beneficial for the. The the community on the whole.
Good point. We did have two committee wide meetings four months ago. One of the things we're doing right now, we're asking people who want to be on board and volunteer with us to make stuff happen the next three years. Is to sign up. And so there's on my website, it's a place you can sign up right now if you want to be involved in. East side, west side, midtown. And so that's ongoing right now. Once we get people to sign up. Also having meetings with those various groups across the city. So we're in that process right now as we speak. So. I want to get up and say publicly because nobody has is aware of that. Go to our website and go to Vibrate Michigan City. You can sign up on a committee you want to be on because we want to make sure people are involved at all levels.
Is that going to be like the different workshop or groups put together like to work with the. Different entities that have come to the city to, you know, formulate a a plan or?
We've got a plan. We spent the last six months working with Brookings Institute, List, meeting every month at the Hope Center. And so there is a plan. We unveil a plan late August and so we had one meeting since then to talk about how to do implementation. We are currently working with the E P, the E D Economic Administration. And I E D C National to get a fellow in Michigan City, a fellow who is paid by them free of cost to come and help us with those things and bring in. Resources nationally to Michigan City. So we'll know that probably in January if we want or not. We apply, we're one of five offices apply for a grant. A person to do it, not a grant, a person, free of cost. We made it top one hundred, so we're not competing. To get one of those people to come here next year. So we're trying to do some things that will help the city move forward.
So. But one one additional come question. When do you think that? You'll have. This formalized so you can start breaking.
We want to have a meeting with the groups that have signed up to talk about. Next step forward and then maybe do a committee meeting probably mid to late. Spring to talk about who's doing what and that we could coordinate and everybody knows who's on first, who's on second and who's working with who because. And that's why this person is going to help us doing doing some of that because it's a lot of coordination.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Mister President, I have a question from Sir Hasi. You know. I'm a new member of the council and there are several new members who will be coming in next year. Would you consider doing a workshop early next year to. Give an idea how the structure is, how does it function and how. The various roles of the different individuals in in the M C E D C and I I think it would be a good idea. And then I don't know, how often do you present to the council like a report, like every six months or three?
We usually do a big report there every spring.
Every spring.
And then we come periodically to talk about different projects that are going on. So usually spring and summer is usually the big, the big, big reports.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, as you mentioned, you have a number of new people coming on board. So we'll make sure we provide some kind of background data on how stuff works, behind the scenes. How we do abatements, those kind of things. They'll see where the process, how we work with the city attorneys and the major attorneys to make those things happen. Because we would have liked a resolution, they did, so.
And Councilman Dabney.
Yeah, real quick, just the you mentioned the website, nets E D C M C.
Dot com.
Dot com. So you can go ahead and check this out. Talk about the vibrant Michigan City and everything like that. That's E. D C M C dot com. And that's where you can sign up and everything as well, right?
Or vibrant Michigan City. That's easier.
E C M C or vibrant Michigan City.
Either one will get you there.
Any other comments from the council?
I move for adoption.
Second.
Most to approve by Councilman Deitch and seconded by Councilman Paul Presblewinski. Ms. Knight on the vote, please.
Mister Paul Presblewinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mister Dabney.
Aye.
Mister Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mister Matt.
Aye.
Miss Deitch.
Aye.
Mister Don Presblewinski.
Aye.
Mister Simmons.
Aye.
And Doctor Cora.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Can you please read our first ordinance on first reading?
An ordinance on first reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the general fund and local income tax. Economic Development Fund to cover cash shortage at the police pension fund. And this is introduced by Mister Don Presblewinski and Doctor Cora.
Any comments from the sponsor?
I just saw. Brief explanation on this ordinance. To my understanding is that when. The monies were to be put aside by the state pension board. And they send the money into into the city to pay for this, that the city controller did not put enough. Money. Formulated to the to the pension board for then to send the money up to the state. They were actually. Three hundred thousand dollars short for the year of twenty twenty three. So what we have to do to shore up the pension fund is to. Add another three hundred thousand into the into the fund.
Thank you, Councilman.
That's the basis of it.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Oh, and this is our. This was sponsors. This is also our public hearing.
First reading, then we have to second rate to do the public here. Correct?
Gotcha, okay. So comments from the public? Comments from the council?
I I got a question on this. Hundred and fifty thousand and you you said that the controller did not send enough money. So. Evidently, they have to get correspondence back to the city to send so much. So was, didn't anybody find out was that a straight out admission by the Controller's Office? As far as I know, it wasn't a. Let's just say it was an oversight by the Controller's Office. It wasn't an admission. That somebody did something wrong or they shortchanged the account. She just didn't file for enough. Funding for the whole year for the pension fund. So basically, we're two months short. Hundred and fifty for November, hundred and fifty for December and now. It's not that the state is going to send us three hundred thousand because they already have their pension fund budgeted out for the year. So the city. Has to make up the difference.
Can we have the. Can you come to the mic, please, Deputy Controller?
Mary Lynn Wall, Assistant Controller, City of Michigan City. It's actually. If you look at a budget, we we do have to every at the January of every year, we submit a report. To P R F on the amount, on the amount of payments that the amount of 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 people that we have. Still in the pension and we have to send that report to them. So they, then they do an actuarial study and then they determine how much comes to us. In our budget, we budgeted higher revenues than what actually came in. So if you look at a budget performance report, it looks great. The problem is that we also have contractual services in there that when we give tests. We have other expenses that pay out. So basically what's happened is. Um so basically what's happened is we inadvertently over budgeted the amount of revenues that were coming in. And then when we got our second distribution in September, as we should, we roll cash balances forward. And we realized the cash balance was going to go negative, the fund balance of the fund, if we didn't do an additional appropriation. So it isn't that they didn't send us the wrong amount of money. We just overestimated the revenues that were coming in. And after we got the second distribution, as we do at this time of year for all of our funds, we are projecting forward to make sure that our funds, because we're always estimating the revenues, they don't always come in as projected. That answer?
Uh, Dr. Cora.
So I have a question of the, do we receive these funds from the state?
Yes, twice a year.
Twice a year?
Twice a year. Last one came in September.
So did we get the right amount?
Yes, we did. We got, we received the right amount in our budget. Um in our budgeting, we put too high of an estimated revenue. So therefore, after we took a look at the actual cash balance, because you've got two different things happening, just because you budgeted amount of revenues coming in doesn't mean those revenues are actually are actually what um what we received. That's when we determined we were going to be short.
So and half of it is coming from the general fund and half of it is coming from the lit E D fund?
Correct, correct.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
We did.
Any other comments from the council? Councilman Preszwalensky?
You you know, uh so with that explanation on the uh budgeting process, shouldn't this uh hundred and fifty stay in the lit? And actually that money, that other hundred fifty come out of the general fund?
We're actually moving three hun- we need three hundred. We're taking a hundred and fifty from the general fund and a hundred and fifty from the lit. That's what we decided to. We didn't want to move the whole three hundred out of the general fund.
Why not?
Because that would, we're trying to maintain a higher cash balance in our general fund. And we just, we did.
Well, okay, well, with that statement, if I may, then you just took a hundred and fifty thousand out of the lit that actually in essence should be a budgeted item. And then you short the lit tax when you're that lit fund that we could be using that to buy equipment for police and fire.
No, this isn't public, this is just the, it's just regular lit.
Oh, oh, okay.
And that had a healthier and that had a, we we had to take a look at our cash, the cash balances and the funds that we could transfer from. And we determined didn't want to take it all out of either one of the funds. Either either fund would have been appropriate. But the determination was to make the split it between that and the lit funds.
The economic, I mean, uh county.
Yes.
Tax.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, thank you for the clarification.
Mr. President, I have another question.
Uh Councilwoman Tillman, what's that?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um Councilman Paul Preszwalensky had asked if anyone had reached out. I actually also reached out to Controller Hoff Master and got a response because I was questioning um again as well, was this an oversight? How is it that we waited so long to decide that we need an additional appropriation? Um and just just to gather some of that her statement that she uh replied back to me um as um Ms. Mary Lynn uh was explaining because it was a projected, they projected the expenses for the remainder of the year for the cash balance, which would have given a negative without an adjustment to the cash balance. One of the other things is um the analysis of the state pension distribution versus the expenditures um included some information on how the state calculates this distribution as the state estimates for July first through June thirtieth, eighteen months before we actually expend those funds. Um but when gave the large, because we gave that large increase to our police officers, it increased the amount of our expenditures. And that was not included in the state estimates, hence creating a shortfall yearly. So then we got to keep in mind too anticipating um the new hires that we have that's going to increase our pensions and then we have those that retired and not knowing that the.
No, these, this is a set amount of pensions of of pension pensioners that are are from the old plan.
Okay.
They get increases, but you are right. And I and I and I forgot about that, that part of that too. We're kind of always behind. So this year, we're going to report on last year's wages.
Right.
So when we receive, when we receive large wages, that wasn't accounted for because they also, the pensioners also do receive that benefit of the raises. So that did have a and and Yvonne did go through a a explanation on that too. Correct.
Uh Dr. Cora. Yeah, I had one more question or suggestion since uh I I'm new on the council and there are several new members who will be coming on in January. Uh I would appreciate if the controller's office would organize a workshop sometime in January or February, early part of next year to um give us an idea of what are the different funds that are available in the city? Uh how are they funded and which fund um uh money is used for or expense? I think it's it's just a broad overview of that. I think it'll be helpful.
Okay, and we plan on doing that.
Right.
Okay. So we will have.
Maybe that was the young report is due in February.
First.
Sorry, too. So we've got a lot.
Yes.
We'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Correct.
Any other comments from the council? Having none, this will be held off for second reading. So now we're reading on second?
Yeah, I'm just gonna move to to read on second reading.
Okay. So we have a motion to read on second reading by Councilwoman Deitch and seconded by Councilman Paul Preszwalensky.
It's only on first reading.
We got to form a public hearing?
Yes, and you just have to have a public hearing.
Right.
Which is tonight.
Yep, so well, we need to to vote the to vote on the uh the motion to to move to second reading first. So I'm gonna move, change my motion to move to do second and third reading tonight.
Second.
Same second. Paul, hand it.
I had to remove my second.
We have a motion to have second and third reading by Councilwoman Deitch and seconded by Dr. Cora. Ms. Nilo, on the vote, please.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preszwalensky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
And Mr. Paul Preszwalensky?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nilo. Can you please read this ordinance on second reading?
An ordinance on second reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the general fund and local income tax economic development fund to cover caps cash shortage in the police pension fund. And this is introduced by Mr. Don Preszwalensky and Dr. Cora.
And this will be our formal public hearing. Um any comments from the sponsor? Any comments from the public? This is our formal public hearing.
Scott Mallon, two hundred Kenwood Place, how well funded, what percentage is this pension funded to? Are we at a hundred percent minus three hundred thousand? Um do we have a choice in doing this? If there's no choice, there's really no argument, is there? But how well funded is the pension? Uh like you hear about many municipal uh pensions that are at thirty-six percent of or forty percent. Where where are, where does this one stand? That's something I can ask.
They can answer during uh council comment. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Public comment is closed. Comments from the council? Councilman Preszwalensky?
Mary Lynn, you want to answer that question on how this is funded? Uh you know, because we get our debit or our our, we get our information from the state and they monitor it and there's two separate funds.
Hi, Mary Lynn Wall, Assistant Controller. Yeah, this is, this is for our 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 retirees that are on the old, what we call an old plan. So eventually, this actually pension liability will go down every year. So right now, we're obviously short and then next year in the budget, we will make sure it's funded. It it will be funded with the with the correct revenues. It was just the, it was just the actual, just a mistake in our in our fi- in in our estimated revenues plus the raises that were given. So and then the the raises will not be the double-digit raises. We don't anticipate that going forward. I hope that answers your question. Okay.
Any other comments from the council? All right, now will this ordinance be held off for third reading? Ms. Nilo, can you please read this ordinance on third reading by title only?
An ordinance on third reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the general fund and local income tax economic development fund to cover cash shortage in the police pension fund. And this is introduced by Mr. Don Preszwalensky and Dr. Cora.
Any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Have most to approve by Councilwoman Deitch and seconded by Councilman Paul Preszwalensky. Ms. Nilo, on the vote, please.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preszwalensky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preszwalensky?
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nilo. Can you please read our uh next ordinance on second reading?
An ordinance on second reading by title only an ordinance ordinance to establish responsible bidding practices and submission requirements on public works projects and creating section two dash three, four, five in the Michigan City Municipal Code. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Don Preszwalensky, Mr. Paul Preszwalensky and Dr. Cora.
Any comments from the sponsor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deitch?
Yes, so we've had two workshops. We had one informal workshop um at NICA I B E W hosted by um the uh I B E W and the La Porte County Building Trades. And then we had um a city council workshop as well. Um I'm gonna be asking for third reading this evening as well for for this ordinance. And um one thing that um I I'll state, um there will be a restructuring of the the city inspection planning department that's going to take a couple of months. Um so I know that um with this responsible bidding ordinance and the uh hiring ordinance, there'll be a few changes that I'll be requesting of the new council. But um I just want to state that it's, you're gonna have to give me a little time because we have a lot of work to do. But I won't be making any um changes right out the gate. I am bring, I'm working with a consultant on how to restructure this department to make sure we put the best customer service forward. So I I did want to state that for the count, for the for the record that um we got a lot of work to do in that department and you're gonna have to bear with me um and the public is gonna have to bear with me um in doing that, which will be um some some requests that I'm gonna be making um of the council, the new council and um and the public um to make sure we do it right and that um I I don't take it lightly. So um I I just want to state that because this is a part of that as well, the hiring ordinance is part of that. And and we need the the right people doing the right things um as the city grows. So um so I I do want this on third reading this evening, though.
Second. Making that as a motion?
I'll I'll wait to after public comment.
All right, all right, sorry. Any comments from the public? At the end of the uh meeting, we'll have regular public comment. Thank you. Uh any comments from the council?
This is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I'm really happy to hear that you're gonna restructure the planning and inspection department when you take office, Mayor-elect Angie Nelson Deitch. I think what really needs to be done is we need to outsource some of those duties, like like the house inspections. A lot of those duties can be just be done with a house inspector. Like when you, when you go to buy a house, you have to have a house inspection done. And you know, the the seller has, they make a list of the things that need to be done and the buyer has their mandate to do some of the things like changing electrical boxes out of date. But but you think, because because almost similar to what we do currently do with the city engineer. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kalavich. Any other comments from the public? Any more online? Comments from the council?
I move that we go to third reading.
Second.
We have a motion to go to uh read this on third reading and by Councilwoman Deitch and seconded by Councilman Paul Preszwalensky. Ms. Nilo, on the vote, please.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preszwalensky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preszwalensky?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Tidell. Can you please read this ordinance on third reading by title only?
An ordinance on third reading by title only an ordinance to establish responsible bidding practices and submission requirements on public work projects and creating section two dash three, four, five in the Michigan City Municipal Code. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Don Preszwalensky, Mr. Paul Preszwalensky and Dr. Cora.
Any comments from the sponsor? Uh any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have most to approve by Councilman Don Preszwalensky and seconded by Councilwoman Deitch. Ms. Nilo, on the vote, please.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preszwalensky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preszwalensky?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
And Ms. Fitz, Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Thank you, Ms. Nilo. Oh, aye, sorry.
I have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Nilo. Could you please read our next ordinance on uh third reading by title only?
An ordinance on third reading by title only creating section twenty-two dash seventy and section fifty dash one fifty-one in the Michigan City Municipal Code to require a solid waste disposal plan for each application to the Michigan City Planning and Inspection Department for a building electrical H V A C and the plumbing permit and creating section twenty-two dash eighty-two C in the Michigan City Municipal Code to require that a building site be cleaned and all construction debris be removed before certificate of occupancy be occupancy is issued. And this is introduced by Mr. Don Preszwalensky, Ms. Deitch, Mr. Dabney and Mr. Simmons.
Any comments from the sponsors?
Yeah, Mr. President, uh if I may, uh we have had two workshops on this uh ordinance. And we're going to have a meeting uh tomorrow morning with the city attorney and the inspection department and the other co-sponsors uh at eight thirty in the O C room. I thought it was necessary that we get together one more time because although we did have a second workshop, there were people coming in and out, not staying for the whole workshop. And there were a lot of good comments made there. And rather than uh have, you know, a a third reading without having that meeting where we can get the real good ideas that came out in the the workshop, put down on paper and have this thing ready to go finalized for a final edition and not have to make amendments down the line, down the line. You know, when we bring something back, let's bring back a a finished product where we're ready to go. Uh like I said, we had two workshops. Some council members attended, some some didn't, uh and that's our prerogative. Uh but I thought with this, these ordinances are very important to the development and the cleanliness of Michigan City and how it uh looks and represents itself to the people, both in Michigan City and in northwest Indiana. So with that being said, I'm making a motion to table this ordinance uh until the next hmm, give us uh one more, one more month, okay? Two meetings.
Twenty-first.
Okay, two meetings. That way we get everything worked out and we bring back a finished product.
Second meeting in January.
We have two more meetings this month?
No, we have one more meeting.
Can this go over?
Then a new council.
It's motion table it. Table it to a date certain.
Okay, okay. Yeah, but then I can bring it back whenever. I don't have to wait for that date to bring it back, do I?
Want to bring it back sooner, you could move to move it for the table.
Yeah, okay.
I have a motion by Councilman Preszwalensky.
Exactly.
And seconded by Councilwoman Deitch. Ms. Nilo, on the vote, please.
Ms. Deitch?
We didn't get to comment on any member or the motion? Table, I need the motion to table. Well, I just want to say.
Well, I just wanna say one thing. Thank you because I'm working days.
That's all?
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbulinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presbulinski? Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
And Mr. Mack?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and one opposed.
If I may, uh, Council President, make a comment on my vote. Is that I wanna say this is that the reason I voted nay because I think it's, uh, on up, uh, a very inconvenient time for people who work for a living at eight-thirty in the morning, or people who are running a business that would wanna comment on this or to take more input. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a question. We're tabling this with, um, authors that it's gonna be brand new, or is it coming back as a new or with the same people? Even though?
All right, so the question is what happens to the legislation? So, your question is just what happens to the legislation itself?
Yes, before the end of the year with the new council.
And it's in the process of being, uh, approved, you're saying?
Yes.
It would have to be reintroduced?
So it does have to be reintroduced, so my question is, so that, my question is, we're tabling it.
And one of the au, you're saying one of the authors?
Or any, it could be all of them. I mean, I'm just making the comment that typically we leave some of our legislation within the calendar year
Right.
versus carrying it over, so do we have to reintroduce it next year?
It would be technically, so when it comes off the table, it'd be a reintroduction. So there's a prevention in doing it, but it would start you back at the beginning.
First reading?
First reading?
Yes.
Okay, um, question, Mr. President, question. Hi, so we haven't moved on to the next item on the agenda. So if I wanted to change my motion to go back for the next meeting that we have in December, the last meeting in December, and get everything done within the next two weeks. When we have this body here that's very familiar with the ordinance and, you know, I think that's fair, it's fair to the council that's here instead of bringing it on to a new council and they're gonna take a look at it and yeah, I think, can I do that?
You can.
You can just take it on, you can also just pull it off the table at the next meeting. Yep, you just pull it off the table.
Oh, now what do you, with that? Okay. Okay, so would that be just, uh, would it have to be on the agenda or we have, does it have to be on the agenda?
It does have to be on the agenda because you don't really know if you're gonna make that motion or not.
Okay, so I can just pull, I can just?
That's the motion that you make during the open meeting. From the floor, you make the motion if you wanna remove it from the table, can have the help of the center.
Okay, so when we get done with all the ordinances and resolutions, well, when we get done with the ordinances, then I can say I wanna bring this ordinance off the table. Okay.
Thank you. All right, uh, Dr. Cora?
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna make a suggestion. We can move this to the next meeting. If we are ready, we can act on it.
Right.
If you're not ready, then we'll table it that time.
Right.
It, it's, we can do that, we can do it either way.
Yeah, he already moved to table it, so.
And we, we already tabled it, so he can bring it off the table at the next meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Ms. Nyla, can you please read our last ordinance on third reading by title only? No.
Okay.
All right. What we got?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, amending section fifty-eight dash sixty of chapter fifty-eight of the Michigan City Municipal Code and amending various sections within chapter ninety-eight of the Michigan City Municipal Code pertaining to garbage, trash, and rubbish. And this is introduced by Mr. Don Presbulinski, Ms. Deitch, Mr. Dabney, Mr. Simmons, and Mr. Paul Presbulinski.
Scott, Mr. Sponsor.
And Mr. President, with the same, uh, explanation I gave for the previous ordinance, I wanna make a motion to, uh, table this motion, or table this ordinance also.
Can we allow public comment before we table it?
Sure.
All right. So, so can we wait on?
The council, if the council agrees to it.
Yes.
I'll agree to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor.
It didn't get a second yet.
Didn't I have a second?
So that we can?
Okay.
Public comment?
Or?
What?
And have we have a motion on second?
I'm trying to get public comment. No, I said we didn't get a second yet so that we could do public comment and then we'll come back.
You can withdraw it.
I was drawing my second.
All right. Any comments from the public?
Comments from the public on this, on this ordinance?
Yes, this specific ordinance.
Scott Mallon, Turner, Kenwood. We've got several refuse ordinances going on all at the same time. It gets really confusing, as was the joint, uh, workshop on the fifteenth. There was confusion. You guys were confused what you were talking about. I was gonna recommend this be tabled. At this time, all these refuse ordinances, they, 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 there's a need clearly for some work on our refuse ordinances. We've got three different things going on. This one, you, is about the fines and fees for refuse, which so far seem punitive. They were starting out at five hundred dollars per thing. I don't know if you've moved that to two hundred and fifty dollars as a minimum fee. Um, I think you guys are looking at it from the side of contractors leaving big messes. I'm looking at it from the side of a person changing the bathroom vent light, which our planning department or building department says you need a permit for. So I'm also supposed to have a refuse plan if I put a light in? I think we need to differ, we need to have some level where for a refuse plan is required. We have to separate from small jobs, big jobs, professionals, contractors, homeowners, et cetera. Again, the fines and fees or, and it comes to communicating with the people that we're changing a system. Uh, we already have, uh, spring and fall cleanups, which are nice. It was suggested at the workshop that perhaps each residence gets another one free bulk pickup a year or special pickup, whatever we're calling it. Um, there was confusion. Should there be one totter per address or two? And if there's more than one or two, what's a monthly fee? There are too many questions yet to be answered for this to be going to second or third reading. I actually think two weeks is too soon. The bulk of this council is going to be here next year. As far as I know, there's only, was it one new person?
Mm-mm.
I don't know.
No, yeah.
Really?
Yes.
My bad. Well, one of you is the mayor, so I mean.
So she won't be here.
Well, she won't be on the council, um. This involves every residence in the, in the city. It should be worked out clearly as Councilman Presbulinski, Don Presbulinski said, instead of need to be amended over and over again. I think, given that it affects everybody, that there are so many questions, even most of the council members, the refuse department, how other communities do this, we should slow down, do another workshop, painful workshop. I wish I could have attended. I was out of town. I would have been there otherwise. I actually wanted to be there. Um, this is worth talking about and getting right and not being rushed through. Um, we've, we've worked on it this long. If it goes to the next council, I mean, we can, you, you guys just did a, a first, second, third, and public hearing on, on, on amendment uh, on, on ordinance tonight, so waiting to the next council doesn't mean this goes for another six months, but let's not rush this through. It involves the planning department, involves the refuse department. It's like you wanna, you wanna have fees, you wanna have fines. We need to work that out. I would suggest we table this until the next year. Let's not try to rush it through because there's, 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 it's, it's confusing for everybody. And one more meeting at eight-thirty tomorrow morning, where the only notice was just now, doesn't really give public a chance for people who work days.
Some people do work for a living, pay their taxes.
So I, I would ask that you table it almost indefinitely. Let's start over, let's get it right. We've got three different refuse ordinances. They interrelate. They involve multiple departments. Departments are gonna be shaken up apparently. Uh, planning and building, which needs it desperately. That, I understand there's a need for it. The refuse department needs more revenue. There are, there are ways to do that and still be a service to the people and not be punitive. Thank you for your time.
Kathy Stransky, two-two-three Spark Grab. I wanna tell you what I see, and it's mostly, um, early, early in the morning. There are pickup trucks that come down the alley and they throw wood into the alley. They throw garbage into the alley. They don't live in my neighborhood. I have never even seen these people. But the garbage to dump it in our alley is much cheaper than having to get a garbage service out in the county somewhere. So the people with their garages, that may not be their garbage. It got dumped, and that is a problem. I see it. I see it happen. And so we gotta consider that, too. I mean, I don't know what you're gonna do about it, but it, it, that is a big problem in our city alleys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Gross, eight-thirty West Sixth Street. Um, I don't see where a refuge ordinance belongs in the building code. There should be one refuge ordinance for the entire city for everything. I mean, to go and apply for a permit and have to show what I'm gonna do with the disposal does nothing for all those people that shop at Menards and Lowe's buy their vanities, their tubs, everything else, never obtain a permit. So this refuge ordinance won't apply to them because they're not getting a permit in the first place. We just need to have a consolidated refuge ordinance that applies to everybody regardless of where the refuge is coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Yeah, this is Tommy Kalavich. I'm making a suggestion. I think Rodney McCormick brought this up a while back. You need to start impounding the vehicles of these people who are doing these illegal dumping. I think like what Kathy Stransky said, I think a lot of this dumping might be come from people out in the county. They really have no other way to get rid of it, especially the dumping that goes on outside the gate on Hitchcock Street at the Central Services Yards. That needs to stop. That's, that's not good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kalavich. Any other comments from the public?
All right, now I already spoke. Real briefly, Scott Mallon, Turner, Kenwood. Another question that came with the joint workshop were some large apartment buildings that were using the city for their waste disposal. Many other cities, it's four and, four units or fewer would be, uh, city pickup. Larger than that, people should have to get private waste haulers. Uh, apartment building with thirty-five totters, I've always questioned that myself. That seems like low-hanging fruit right there.
Thank you. Comment from the council? Councilman Presbulinski?
I, I, I have a lot of concerns about what's going on here, and I, I agree with a lot of comments that have been made by the public. I also agree that, you know, I, I wanna make this comment so not to reflect on anyone that this problem really escalated when somebody wasn't doing their job. And I don't wanna keep bringing that up, so I think that we do have somebody being the inspector right now, and I think that the comments that were made about pu- making one general ordinance that, that yeah, that the planning department has to adhere to and the sanitary district has to ad- adhere to. It's one, it's one ordinance in that we are here to provide a service and not make money. So I was at the workshop and, uh, men, it was mentioned that we start charging people for totters like twelve dollars a month, eleven dollars a month, and I, and I wa, I, that didn't sit well with me because initially, we bought the totters with riverboat money. We bought them with riverboat money, so now, we're, I mean, I was sitting here listening to this, now we're gonna start charging people, but we're only gonna do it for a year, and I, I was, I was totally taken back by this concept. And I don't even know how we got there. I think that these things really need to be looked at. And I think that there are some things that, uh, people are overlooking, like maybe we need to have a day during the month that, or some week on the routes, or these people know their routes and the sanitary district knows their routes, and they say, hey, this is your pickup day to put your big stuff out or call us and let us know what you need. I'm, I'm just putting it out there so it's more organized and the stuff's not laying around for three weeks somewhere at somebody's house. It, and I agree that if somebody goes get, get th- this thing has really gotten to the point where the, the building code that was put into place after ten years of sitting on the books and this administration put it into effect, needs to be revisited if we're gonna do anything substantial to help the citizens besides, uh, ni, uh, re- redefining and massaging garbage and trying to make money off of this. So I wanna remind everybody that when I was initially on the council during the nineties, we had a councilman that wanted to farm out our, uh, sanitary, uh, department in that it was proven that we took bids that our department was doing it cheaper than a outside provider. So I think that we have a good department, and I think that we're looking at too much to, to even, I, I mean, I think we're getting just way over the top, way over the top complicating this. And I think that, you know, we, we need to let Mr. Adams do his job and, and see where we go. And you gotta remember that if, if you look at the, the, this, this, excuse me, the funds in the sanitary district, I don't think we're that far off from last year uh, on what they spent on disposing of their, uh, product, of their, you know, rubbish. Uh, I think before we go all the way that, you know, we're all into um, changing this ordinance and what we have to live by, or that we make a, a area where people can bring their stuff and it's separated, if you really wanna get into it, that you separate your waste and that here's your yard and that, okay, we got all this construction debris and that, you know, your wood goes here, tree limbs here, and boom, I think that you could solve a lot of the issue about people just in these construction sites on helping them to recycle. I, I really do. Lu- LaPorte used to do it and but I, I think that we're, this is just really complex and a simple issue. And I think that we should table it, and if you get into the next year, it, I don't, I don't have a problem with it because you know, I was at that workshop, both of them, and the planning department wasn't even there. Come on, give me a break. Let's tell it like it is. They don't care. They just want more regulations to go after people. I was, I'm gonna tell you what piqued me off. I was glazing my windows on my hundred-year-old house and an inspector came by and sat there watching what I was doing. And so I called the inspection department and said, do I have to have a permit for glazing windows? You know, am I gonna get red-tagged for this? Oh, ha, 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 that's funny, Paul. No, it's what it is, is that now, at this point, am I being targeted? And am I being selectively enforcing the code? And it's called selective enforcement. And that, and I'm glad to hear Angie's gonna reform that department because it needs reform. And I think that everybody should wait on this. Let's see what happens with the department. Let's see what happens with the sanitary district, how they bring their costs down. And we don't need to be regulating the constituents anymore for bad. And we don't need to be regulating the constituents anymore for bad, for a few bad actors. Because my thing, and don't take this the wrong way, Scott, is that we, we have bum landlords out there. We got one that lives by Kathy Stransky, all right? And so, so.
So what happened with the whole buddy?
We need to just put the brakes on.
You glaze those windows, you know?
I, I'm not getting rid of them old windows. Okay?
Mr. President.
Right now, so I think we should tasele it indefinitely.
So, but, okay. Yeah, just a comment about these, uh, the fees, uh, that are being adopted. Yes. No, about the fees that are being adopted and that were given, they were handed out at the last workshop that we had. And the sanitary district doesn't approve those fees. According to our attorney, any fees that are gonna be even thought about being imposed on the citizens are gonna be approved by its body right here. So for whatever reason, if the council feels we don't need to charge anybody for a pickup or, you know, possibly there is a need to charge for a certain type of pickup, uh, then that'll be decided by this body here. And that's what's gonna be discussed and we'll continue to discuss it until we get it right. Yeah, but I just want to make sure that this is right. And it just doesn't come back to the council and say, okay, third reading, let's, let's put it in, but then we can make amendments. Every other meeting, we'll be making amendments to this. That's not right. If you're gonna do something, bring the product back. And if it takes, you know, even into the next console, that's fine. But my objective is, being one of the sponsors, is to keep it moving, to get the right parties at the right place. You get Connie Adams there, he had fantastic suggestions at this last workshop that we had. Just, uh, not fortunate enough to have somebody, you know, write it down that takes shorthand or what have you, quick enough. Or to have Connie and myself have a one-on-one because he's working all day. But to have Connie come and sit down with the city attorney, so she understands exactly what Connie's talking about. And these other departments that, and Mike Milatovic from the sanitary district. So he knows exactly what Connie's talking about. That's the whole concept I have in this meeting, to get the parties in a room to write down ideas. If we put, if we bring something back, we do. If we don't, we table it again, that's fine. But to my, my responsibility as being a sponsor on this is to keep it moving and to keep it improving and bring it back to the council as a product that we can take a look at and move on from there. Instead of just throwing it on a shelf and letting it sit there. So this whole idea about the council may be coming back or the city may be coming back and pricing and, and charging constituents for every thing that they're gonna have done with refuse pickup is not true. That'll be all decided by the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Well, and I.
Councilwoman Deitch.
So, um, and, and I will be naming the refuse superintendent for next year. So, um, we will have somebody in place to help support that moving forward. Um, but I would like to move the table into the same meeting as, as the last, uh, when did you, when did you table it? When did you table it?
To, uh, uh, two meetings.
Two.
Yeah, to the next meeting or bring it off the table.
Okay, um, until indefinitely, until you bring it off the table?
The, the original, uh, motion was to table for two meetings, which would have carried us into the next fiscal year, but.
Okay, yeah, I'll just say, I'll just say, um, the next two meetings, just like you did in the last one.
Because I'm hoping by then, you know, we have something together and we'll go from there.
All right.
You know, the council, council feels that we only have something that people are satisfied with. Then Mr. Dabney, any other council members, if they want to table it, we'll table it and wait till next year.
All right, I'll table it into, for two meetings.
All right, we have a motion to table by Councilwoman Deitch.
Support.
And second by Councilwoman Tillman. Miss Niall, vote please.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Dr. Cora.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky.
Nay.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
And Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
We have any in favor and wanna oppose.
Thank you, Ms. Niall. Uh, new business. Approval of the twenty twenty-four council meeting dates. Do you have that? Very much so approved.
Motion to approve.
Support. Niall, vote.
Yeah, so I didn't know if you submitted, if you gave it to us, amended it or not, or did you?
No.
Okay, so, um, the city council meeting for January, um, my apologies, I thought it, I didn't see the, the list. Um, can I see that real quick? Um, count, uh, to, click nine, but, um, the, the first council meeting, the second council meeting in January is typically January sixteenth. And, um, I, I made a request for it to be January twenty-third, since there are five Tuesdays in the month. And there are several, uh, new council members, uh, attending the, the newly elected officials boot camp. And there's a new requirement of city of fit, uh, elected officials of five hours of education, continual education, which is a good thing. And, um, so I was, uh, requesting that that be changed. And I think the, uh, the other one was changed for the elections. Those were already done, but I, I did want to amend it to have, um, the second council meeting in January on December, I mean, on January twenty-third and not the sixteenth, if that was okay with everyone. Because AIM is hosting all of the conferences on the same time as the, as the council meeting.
Is that a motion?
I'll second that.
Yes.
It's a motion to amend, uh, twenty twenty council meeting schedule. And sec-, uh, by Councilwoman Deitch and seconded by Councilman Paul Preswellinsky. So Miss Niall, vote please.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Dr. Cora.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Paul Preswellinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
And Mr. Don Preswellinsky.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Miss Niall. FYI, the council has one appointment to the Michigan City Women's Commission. Uh, term expires December twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. The incumbent, Ms. Veronica Martin.
Uh, Mr. President, so since we didn't have the council meeting the last time, we need nominations at this council meeting for the appointments at the last council meeting for these two. For the, um, Women's Commission and for, um, the redevelopment commission. Because we typically vote on these at the last meeting.
Are there any nominations?
Or any forms for the Women's Commission?
Yes. Okay.
Councilman Simmons.
Well, but we're on the Women's Commission right now.
Correct.
Right. Um, we have Angela Carter, Alonda Cross, Christopher Reeves, um, Sadie Williams, Gloria Jackson. For all the applications I received.
For the Women's Commission.
For the Women's Commission.
But one spot.
Yes. I would like to nominate Angela Carter.
I'll second that. We have one nomination for Angela Carter and second. Any other nominations?
Who seconded that, please?
Councilman Preswellinsky, um, Paul Preswellinsky. Have no, not, no other nominations, nominations are closed. Uh, the council has two appointments to the redevelopment commission representing the council. Term expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Incumbents, uh, Angela Nelson-Dight and Kathy Dennis. Are any nominations? Councilman Simmons?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Sher- Cherie Wilson.
Uh, we have one nomination for Cherie Wilson. Is there a second?
The second.
Councilman Preswellinsky.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Paul Preswellinsky.
We have one nomination for Paul Preswellinsky.
Second.
And a second.
What's the first one?
By, uh, the fir- the nomination, the nomination was by Councilman Don Preswellinsky and seconded by Dr. Cora.
Then I have a nomination.
Councilwoman Deitch.
I nominate Tracy Tillman.
Second. Councilman Dabney. So one nomination for Tracy Tillman by Councilwoman Deitch and seconded by Councilman Dabney.
And I'll nominate, uh, Kathy Dennis.
One nomination for Kathy Dennis.
We have two open spots.
There are two open spots in the, the forums were due on, um, last Wednesday. So I, I know I, I shared that with, uh, Ms. Dennis that she missed the deadline. Yeah, so, um, I did share that with her. I know she still would like to be on there. And she's been great on the, on the, um, redevelopment commission. But there were a lot of, um, applicants that came in.
I'm sorry, who was the first nom- what was the first nomination?
Cherie.
Here you go.
Cherie.
Okay. Cherie.
I probably have a, I have one, that's right. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. What are any other nominations? Um, Mayor Perry is axing, asking the Michigan City Council for their advice and consent regarding his appointment to, uh, Mr. Dominic Yankee as a member of the Michigan City Tree Board replacing Ms. Dahlia Giegus due to her retirement. Term will begin immediately and expire eight oh one, twenty twenty-five.
I have comment on all of these. I ask that none of these be appointed until the beginning of the year. Um, IC Code states that after November seventh, um, this, the, the incumbent who has lost the election, um, I, that I can replace all of them. So with that being said, why spend the time and let me reach out to the, the incumbents that are there and have conversations with them and make the decision on whether I reappoint them or not?
And Mr. President, an infomotion is, is the seconds required by that. I second that motion.
I'll make it a motion.
Second. I'll reset.
Yeah, we don't need a second, but I, I'm just stating that, um, he's asking for advising consent. I'm asking the council not to give advising consent on any of the, uh, the candidates and that I'll be, um, reaching out to, um, several of the folks.
For me.
Thank you.
Also, that's, that's a bad, bad question on the.
Yeah, it's time to mic up.
On the redevelopment commission, when do we vote on those?
It's next week.
Okay.
Okay. So, un- finish business, have none comments from the public?
Hi, everyone.
I'm gonna be, oh, so as the parliamentarian, I am gonna be timing you.
I understand.
All right. So you are.
Eighty seconds.
Three minutes, three minutes.
It's not like that. Come on, man. You guys, you guys enjoy it when I come up here, admit it.
I actually wish you'd sign.
Yeah, I know. I don't have a lot today. Um, I would point out the, I did some rough math after the, uh, fire chief was here and that approximately two point eight million dollars in new equipment that lasts for fifteen years breaks down to about five hundred and twenty-five dollars a day over its lifetime or less than two cents per person per day for the people of Michigan City to have this fine new equipment.
That's pretty.
Yeah, it's a little less than two cents a day, that's counting thirty thousand people. The planning department is gonna get a, a hard look. Turns out one of the, the reports they're supposed to have at this point is abandoned vacant properties. I'd like to know the status of that list. They're so into having fines and permits and watching people changing their windows and so forth. How are they handling their current responsibilities? Is the planning department's place to keep that list? How, when, how updated is that? When's the last time they find anybody or notified anybody that they're supposed to be on the list? That's all. Keeping it simple, two cents a day for new fire equipment, though. That's pretty good. I have a lot for garbage stuff, so I'll be there in the morning. See you then.
Hi, everyone. My name is Walter Johns, Michigan City, Edgewood area. This is my third time coming to the front of the council. I'm here to explain a matter that took place that shouldn't ever took place. A person, a loved one passes away. You're in another world. You're not the same. You don't think the same, you don't try it the same. When I put my wife to rest on August the twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, I was disrespected by a person that works at Swan Lake Cemetery. I brought this up to a lot of people's attention. I have proof, I have documents, I have pictures. The maintenance on the place is very poor. The landscaping is disrespecting. Okay? For a person to disrespect someone that is living in a world that they don't want to live in. We're here today going tomorrow. Okay? We don't live forever. We're only passing through. But when a person shows respect to a person by saying, I'm sorry for your loss, my condolences. Never got that. Didn't pay no attention to that. But by looking around and going to the place and see how poorly everything is going on. So I kept going on with this. I didn't give up. I didn't. God gave me the strength to continue even when I was disrespected and when I was told things that these never took place. Okay? I took pictures of the building leaking. The carpet was disrespected to look at. The door was all broken, wouldn't close, wouldn't shut. I brought that to attention to Mrs. Tillman, Tracy Tillman. And Tracy got on it two weeks later. It was taken care of. If you was to go right now to that mausoleum, the door is not locked. They don't lock the door. And the building that's to the left of it, it's locked. So you can lock one mausoleum, but you won't lock the other one, which makes no sense, and I brought this up to attention. Then they came up with giving a key to everyone. But can you imagine going into a crypt and it's raining and then it's leaking and there's six buckets catching water? And your loved one has put the rest of this building. How hurting and disrespected can this be? And how can this gentleman? Well, I just paid him a compliment by calling him a gentleman. Worked for all these years and no one stood up the truth of God. We all have positions. We fulfill our positions. And we do it to the best of our knowledge. And we show compassion for each and every one of us. But to live through that and no, nothing was taking place. Then another tragedy came, which the biggest one. My daughter, September the sixth, two thousand twenty-two, at the age of thirty-five passed away. And I was disrespected then, and I was called names. But I'm not the only one. Other people has complained about this person. But it's still. But it still stood there. I can't come to an understanding or a conclusion. And to lay my head down on the pillow, go to sleep, why this man worked at this place for thirty-nine years and got away with killing people and hurting people when their loved one dies? How is that right? It's not whatsoever. I had family members that was coming over. They made an excuse that I was not home. I was going places, so they won't see what I see.
Yeah.
I went there two, three days ago. The door's still not fixed. Time and time and time again. A worker that works there, by them not locking the door, homeless people was caught sleeping in that mausoleum. Okay, they see them come out early in the morning. So by you locking the doors, you're preventing that. Okay. So I just wanted to bring this up, that I want to protect the future of others. Cause there's gonna be more business there. People don't live forever, like I just said a few minutes ago. And no person should be disrespected and hurted more than that. We're all created by our creator. And for us to show that we careful one another. If anybody here asks me to do anything for them, I'll do it all my heart and I'll fulfill it. Cause I respect all kinds. But for this man to go through this for thirty-nine years and everything stood still, everything, you guys got a big job. Even though the Michigan City is not that big of a town, there's a lot to keep this thing going on and I can understand that. But that cemetery is a part of it.
Thank you.
It is a part of it. I thank you guys for your time. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
This is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I wanna mention some that Don Badgert mentioned on election night. There's gonna be a lot of board and commission seats that are gonna be up. I'd like for all my fellow residents consider serving on a board or a commission. The most important thing if you're gonna consider is you need to read the ordinance that pertains to your board and commission before you apply to serve. Even some of them, they have, uh, 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 subordinances you also need to read. I wanna commend Councilman Paul Preswellinsky on his nomination of the redevelopment commission. We know you're not going anywhere. Also, Councilman Mack and Councilman Simmons, yeah? You, 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 we, we still need you. I also want to congratulate, uh, uh, Michigan City's Marion Brayden Fisk. He's a defensive tackle for Florida State University. He played one whale of a game in the A C CHC championship game against Louisville. He's gonna be playing in the NFL. I've seen him play a lot of, a lot of football all the way through Pop Warner in high school and college. He's gonna play his last college football game in the Orange Bowl against Georgia on New Year's Eve. I also, uh, wanna say happy anniversary to me. It was ten years ago on November twenty-first, two thousand thirteen. I purchased my very beautiful Michigan City Turned the Century Mansion here at thirteen sixteen Ohio Street and became a third, a, a resident here at the city. Best thing I ever did. Best, people ask me, what, what, what's, why, why did you move to Michigan City? What I like is having the city services, having my water, sewer, police and garbage, you know, et cetera, et cetera. You know, we take, you know, before that, I mean, it was my thirty-year anniversary of being a county resident on January third of this year. We moved and bought the house back on, uh, January third, nineteen ninety-three out of the county. But that's what I like about living here in the county. Just wanna say keep up the good work and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Any other comments from the public? Comments from the council? Oh, one more comment from the public.
Good evening, council members. Dakota Euler, seven eighteen Emma Street. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
All right, um, the twenty twenty-three, uh, Shared Ethics Advisory Commission only had three members of the city council sign their pledge. The pledge is a very simple. They ask candidates to commit to providing ethics training for all employees whom they are responsible to support a comprehensive ethics policy with vigorous enforcement and to support whistleblower protection for employees filing ethic complaints. Um, I would ask that any council members that did not have that opportunity to sign that pledge to do some research and consider doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Euler. Any other comments from the public? Any more online? Comments from the council? Councilman Simmons?
Yes, I would like to thank, uh, Councilman Don Preswellinsky for coming out last Saturday to the Festival of Light, uh, where we stood out in, uh, chilly weather, ringing the bell for the red kettle drive. Uh, I'd like to say, uh, or share with everyone that it was a successful night. We did well.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman, uh, President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of comments. And Tommy already alluded to, uh, this gentleman, I'm gonna call him a gentleman, young man, Brandon Fisk, uh, who's number fifty-five. His number is number fifty-five, so he'll be playing in bowl game, whichever next game they're, they're gonna be scheduled for. And it's ju- this young man, he's from Michigan City, went to Michigan City High School. He plays middle guard for Florida State University and he is a big, big individual and he played one hell of a football game that I saw. So if you get a chance, when Florida State's playing, turn them on and watch this young man and be proud of Michigan City and the job that he's doing and representing all of us on the Florida State University Seminoles. And then most importantly, uh, this coming Thursday is Pearl Harbor Day in honoring the, uh, the, uh, soldiers that were killed on this day back in Pearl Harbor. There were two thousand four hundred and three individuals that were killed that day by the attack by the, uh, Japanese. So, you know, take a minute, say a prayer and fly your American flag in honor of those, uh, veterans that were killed that day. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council? Uh, Dr. Cora?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to, um, uh, uh, we just heard comments about the Shared Ethics Commission, uh, that Mr. Dakota Euler talked about. Um, and I'm gonna sign that pledge and, uh, while I was in the, uh, county commission, we did that and the county participated in that. I think it's a good idea for governmental agencies to participate in it. That way it'll give us some training, uh, as to how to handle conflicts of interest and things like that. So, um, as we enter the new year, I would urge that as a city, we should participate in the Shared Ethics Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Cora. Councilman Dyke.
Yeah, so, um, a couple announcements, uh, and I'll, I'll have this on at the next council meeting. We are working on the swearing-in ceremony for all of the, uh, elected officials for December thirtieth. Um, there'll be, it'll be open to the public. It's a Saturday morning at Blue Chip Casino, um, at eleven A M. Um, more details to come, but I, I do want the public to know, um, that everything should be out by next week and, um, and I, I want to, um, you know, make sure that people know that they can participate. Alco is going to record it as well, the program, so that you can put it in your memory, in, in your memory banks. But, um, again, uh, it, it's gonna be a, a program and, um, so more to come, but I did want to make sure that, uh, I know I sent something out to put on everybody's calendar, but it will be open to the public and more information will be shared here, um, within the next week or so. Um, and then also, Mr. Uh, Mr., I call him Mr. Wally, but, um, you know, with the cemetery, um, many of us have had some, some situations and that's something that I don't take lightly and that, um, I've had a discussion. I know, um, Councilman Don has had a discussion and many others. And, uh, we, uh, we all have concerns that, um, we are gonna work our hardest to address. We have a retirement coming up here, um, soon. And, um, that's one of the areas where I'm looking to change what that looks like in the future. Even though I'm getting pushed back for it. But it's still my determination that, um, we need to do something different, which, um, change is hard for people and, and I know that, but it will be more efficient. Um, so hopefully, um, we'll, I'll be able to move forward with the plan that I have for, for the cemetery. Otherwise, I'm gonna be asking the council to rescind that ordinance that we get rid of that board and move that back to the council or to the board of works. And, um, I'm very adamant that we're gonna treat people right. So I just want the new council to understand that there is a lot going on. And the council has the control over the cemetery and what happens to it in the future. So I wanna put that on your radar. And put the cemetery board on notice that, um, we're not gonna tolerate mediocrity and we're not gonna tolerate them treating people in any kind of way. So other than that, I'll change my tone because it's the holiday season and, um, and, you know, with the Seminoles, I have, I have some, most of my family are Seminoles. I went to the, the FAMU FSU College of Engineering. And, uh, my daughter has her master's from Florida State and my sisters, my brothers. So we are so proud of the young man from Michigan City and to have, um, a Michigan Cityite. Um, um, you know, doing the tomahawk chop, chop. So we, we were happy to watch and, and really support and, and push through and, and we're disappointed in, in the, in what happened with the championship, but, um, this young man is gonna be in the NFL next year. Um, there's no doubt in my mind. He's a beast, um, and, uh, he's gonna be great. So hopefully we'll be able to get him to do some camps for our kids here in Michigan City and, uh, and, and yes, I'll be recruiting them and, um, to do some camps and some things. So, uh, it's gonna be exciting for Michigan City moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman, uh, Press Valinsky.
Thank you. Walter, I, I have to say that you said something tonight that struck me. And you know, you have to be a man before you can be a gentleman. And no man of any respectful background would do or be, be that way. And I, I hope that, for all the people that have had, uh, disparity with this individual, I personally would like to apologize because I think that Angie, uh, Mayor-elect, uh, Angie hit a real note on who's controlling that cemetery. Because just a few years back on Memorial Day, that cemetery Greenwood, that was a shambles. Right? And I had many, many phone calls on it, but so I wanna get into. I'm glad that Angie brought that up. First and foremost, as Don talked about, December seventh is coming up. And, you know, it's not the fact that what happened, but how it happened. It was a deceitful act. They said one thing and they did another thing. So what I wanna say is that as far as I'm concerned, that was a terrorist activity. Just like what's going on right now. Just like what's happened in the past on, on different ma- major things that happened to this country. So, yeah, we need to reflect on all of the people, all of the veterans alive and dead who have served this great country. And reflect on all the opportunities that it's given us to be great. And, uh,
Thank you all.
I, I just wanna say that I think that to esteem all our veterans in this county, I'm checking in to see if they got a, a bridge named for either Veterans Memorial Bridge or Danny Bruce Memorial Bridge. I knew Danny Bruce. And I, I, uh, I don't wanna weigh too much into that, but I think at this, at this state in our, uh, country, I was driving down the road, Highway eight, just thinking how we have, uh, so many great opportunities to live in this great country. And it is great. It gives you opportunities to be who you can be. And I think that sometimes people lose, lose the real meaning of that in our freedom. I just wanna say that. I to, to, to everyone, take a moment to thank a veteran. You know? And it's just not on, you know, November eleventh, eleventh day, eleventh hour. So Jeff, thank you. I know people probably don't ask you, uh, or say that too much, but, um, I, I had a, I saw a notice in here on, uh, I'm gonna be asking our city attorney to have a sit-down, an executive session by the end of the year to talk about all our outstanding legal, uh, lawsuits. And I, I, because I have a concern with one that happened on Cool Spring Avenue. That was, uh, a, a chase and, uh, somebody got seriously injured in that. And I think that I, and not, not only that, but I think that I'm gonna try to introduce a, a ordinance by the end of the year to have that done to us quarterly, that the council gets a meeting with our corporate attorney to update the council. I, I think we need to know how much money's going out and what's going on here with that, you know, even though we are insured, we need to be informed. And I think it's a gross oversight that, you know, we haven't, I shouldn't say that to you guys on, it's just a oversight that we need to try to correct. And I'm glad to hear that Angie's going to try, and not try, but it's going to revamp the planning department. I appreciate that, Mayor-elect. Okay? And one, and my final comment, I hope that Angie, as in the past, has our city planner here at these meetings to answer some questions. Oh, and another note, um, that's right. He, he wasn't at our last, at our workshop either. Okay? Thank you.
One more thing. Oh, just kidding. Any other comments from the council? We have most of the journey.
Second.
I have a good evening.